Do we wave? There we go, that worked. All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. This is the City Council regular meeting. We're in Mon County Commission Chambers, 243 High Street. It is Tuesday, December 5th. At quarter after seven, we're calling the meeting to order and asking the clerk if she please call the roll. Wheezy Michael.
Here.
Danielle Trumbull.
Here.
Dave Harshbarger.
Here.
Brian Butcher.
Here.
Mayor Celine.
Here.
Now we're gonna all stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we have approval of the minutes. We have four sets of minutes. November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, special meeting minutes. November twenty-first, regular meeting minutes. November twenty-eighth, legislative meeting, session meeting minutes. November twenty-eighth, committee of the whole meeting minutes. And usually approve it by acclamation unless there's some change or something that somebody has forwarded to the clerk. So we have approved the minutes. Now we're on to correspondence. And we're asking Philip Smith, who's the executive director of the Botanic Garden, if he would make the presentation.
Mayor Celine. Is this ready to go? All right. So first of all, thank you guys for having me here. It's a good opportunity for me to come out and talk to you. I know it's been probably some time since I've been here. I don't even know if I've been here to give a presentation. So it's kind of important for this to happen because a lot of things have been happening at the Botanic Garden over the last few years. And it's, I know all of you know, but it's good for the public to also recognize that the Botanic Garden, the property itself, is city property. So it's apropos for me to give this presentation here. And so kind of jump in to a little bit about what's happening just in the last year. Because a lot of, we've grown a lot over the course of the last five years. But just this year, I put together this presentation just to show you what's up. You got it? Oh, you're on it. It's, no, it's over to the left of the slider, right, just to the left, right there. Boom. All right. So of course, we start out with a pretty picture of the Yeagle Garden there. But I'm gonna go over just a few highlights of developments we've done this year. We've finished irrigation to two of our main garden areas, the Rhododendron Garden and the George W. Longenecker Shade Garden. I should mention that our founder, George Longenecker, passed away a couple of months ago. We had a nice ceremony for him out there. We've expanded the butterfly garden with more plants, with more of that to come in the next few years. We've made a lot of trail improvements, thanks to some different grants. Including boardwalks over wet areas and a bridge over Tibbs Run. I think there may be a picture in here of that. We've updated all of our way marking signs throughout the entire site to be consistent. And to sort of remove friction for visitors so that they know where they're at at all times. That's, that's one of those things, you know, I feel like a lot of visitors, they go out to parks and things like that. They really, they need that friction removed in order to really have a quality experience in the outdoors. And that's important to me from a hospitality standpoint, to make sure that that happens. And also from a professionalism, we want to make sure that this does look like a Botanic Garden. And not just like some random piece of property with trails in the woods. We did add this beautiful new feature this year. It's a stone moon gate. It's about seven feet tall in the middle. This is in the secret garden, and this particular area is popular for what we call elopement weddings. Which are the smaller, like standing room only weddings. And we wanted to sort of give this nice feature for people to sort of stand in front of and have those ceremonies. But also, as we're finding out, it's very, very popular with all visitors who come from around the state. Everybody wants their selfie taken here or to post these types of things on social media, and it's good PR. I'm all about creating these photographic opportunities for people, and this one, I think, really hits it out of the park. We had a stonemason from Mineral County who came in and built this for us. So this is a new feature. The Jet Family helped sponsor this. We, so my site manager and I were looking over a large part of our lawn area. Over what in our master plan will be the core gardens. And as we were looking at it, we started talking about, why do we mow all this grass? And we wanted to create a more, from our mission, we wanted to create a more diverse place for pollinators. So we expanded our pollinator beds over largely into that lawn area using a native seed mix. And so I think that'll be a nice addition as that starts to grow in in this year. We started this last year, it didn't look like much, but this next year, it takes a couple of years for that to really take off. The Children's Adventure Garden, we did, we built this a couple of years ago, but we have plans for future expansions. And in this Phase Two expansion, we did complete a pathway this year that connects that to the meditative labyrinth. And we'll be having some education stations along that pathway going into the spring. This is a passion of mine. I really love paleobotany and fossils. So we were able to create this exhibit that's sort of very unique. I have visited a lot of Botanic Gardens around the US, and I've never seen anything like this. So I think it's kind of fun to have this sort of introduction to prehistoric plants for people to understand. And I think it's kind of a fun way of doing it. We had to have a company custom build this exhibit for us. But of course, myself and my staff helped design all the graphics. And then all the fossils were all collected from right here in West Virginia. We did add two new sculptures this year. They were from Allison Helm and Michael Loop, both of WVU. These were, Allison generously donated this beautiful sculpture that's at the end of the long walk. And then Michael Loop did a sculpture of pixie cups, which are a lichen species that is on our pixie cup trail. I thought it was sort of apropos to have that in that situation there, to sort of introduce people to what it is that pixie cups are. But it's this beautiful sculpture. That was helped funded through the Organizational Arts Grant. Also through that same grant, we continued year three of our summer concert series. Now this is, pales in comparison to what you guys have. But it's still a great outdoor concert venue. We try to always look at the different schedules around town and try to pick dates that aren't in super conflict with everything else. But it's been a really nice addition for our event lawn. We have this pavilion that we built just a couple of years ago, and these concerts are really fun. So this last year was year four of, this last October is year four of the Morgantown Area Nonprofit Scarecrow Spectacular. This is something that I wanted to do to sort of give back to the community through the garden. As you know, the garden itself is a nonprofit organization. But I invite nonprofits from all around the region to come and build a scarecrow that represents their organization and demonstrates their mission. So that people can see the good work that's being done in the community. Because nonprofits often, as you know, people don't know what they're doing. A lot of them operate, you know, out of somebody's living room even. So it's a good way to sort of show off the good work that's being done in this community. And this is a fun sort of art exhibit too. And what we've noticed is I have these traffic's infrared counters. That's the same counters that the rail trails use to sort of monitor traffic on the trails. And we've noticed that our spike, our busy time of year really takes off in May and June. And then slowly starts declining through the summer, into September, and then it goes way back up again in October. And I think part of that is because of the scarecrow exhibit. We also finished our seventh annual Season of Good Taste fundraising dinner series. This is a very popular ticket in Morgantown. These sell out typically pretty quickly. But we invite in chefs from around the area to come and put together these dinners. We sometimes have live music there as well, and it's at our new event facility, the Terrace. So most of you have been there, but it's been wonderful. This is our first full year of having the Terrace. We did six weeks of summer camp this year. This is, we have a few different funders that help us out with this. And the camps continue to just sell out quickly. We maximize, you know, every, every bit of our resources to try to bring these camps to the kids because it is such a popular thing. And then speaking of education, I do have a great education staff. And we brought in over seventeen hundred school students this year for school field trips. Our field trips are not just, you know, bringing kids, drop them off and let them run. We actually, our education staff puts together these curriculum-based tours for the kids. And through a generous grant from Equitrans Midstream, we were able to not only give them all the supplies and gear that they need to do these things. But we also have their transportation paid for. So we actually pay for their busing. Our West Virginia Botanic Garden Day, the legislature designated the Saturday before Mother's Day as West Virginia Botanic Garden Day. As well as designated the West Virginia Botanic Garden as the state's flagship garden. And so we celebrate that every year. This year was our third one. And this is a picture inside the terrace with the WVU Community Orchestra playing. But we put together a lot of great things on that day. Of course, our garden party is a very popular ticket in town. You can see Mayor Celine there and Steve dancing. It's a really fun event. This is our largest fundraising event. Definitely encourage you to check that out. We partnered with the Summit Chamber Music Series to bring classical music to the garden. This is, we're going into our second season now with the Summit Chamber Music Series, and these are very, very popular events. I mentioned the Terrace in its first full year. With that, we had thirty weddings this year. And that's really helping with, give us some more sustainable income stream. I mean, it's not by any means a world beater, but it really does help tremendously with our operating budget. I mentioned this just because it's such a great thing that we were able to partner with local companies. You know, we had a giant tree come down and really destroyed our wetland boardwalk. And March Weston Company stepped up and volunteered to come out and help do repairs to this. And that's just something I'd just like to mention because it's all of us working together, businesses and nonprofits alike. Our twelfth annual Fall Children's Festival is another big event. This is, you know, all hands on deck. We have probably our biggest volunteer event of the year. We have dozens of volunteers to help put this thing on. And then another of our big events is our Halloween doggy trick or treat. We count, usually we count people. At this event, we only count the dogs. And this year, we had over a hundred and eighty dogs dressed in costume that came out to the dog owners, bring their dogs around. And veterinarians and kennels and pet stores and stuff come out and hand out dog treats. And that's, it's just hard to have a bad time whenever you have all those dogs in costume. And thanks to you guys and the West Virginia Legislature, we were able to pave a large part of the garden this year. And that also included a lot of stormwater work that we had to do prior to paving. That's been huge for us. Now we'll be able to operate that, the Terrace, year round because we can now do snow removal. And that's really important for us and greatly appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that and that you guys made that possible. And then, of course, you know, now we're looking at future paving and trying to get the rest of the garden paved. Through the county levy, we were able to help do a lot of work up at the top of the hill. This is a house that the Botanic Garden owns. The city owns all the rest of the property except for this house and about a couple acres there to the top of the hill. And this house, we're renovating this into administrative facility. And so we were able to finish the first phase of that, which is all the outside work through use of some of the levy funding. For the Parks and Trails levy. And then, of course, the big thing going into 2024 is the completion of our Equitrans Midstream Visitor Center. This is gonna be really big because a lot of our visitors come and they don't really know, they need oriented. And they need to talk to someone, they need to ask questions and learn more about the site. And we don't really have that opportunity for them yet. And so this is gonna present that sort of human interaction experience for people to come in. There'll be a gift shop there and a cafe. And we plan to open this around April or May of this year, or this coming year. And with that, I will take any questions. But you see, there's a lot going on out at the Botanic Garden, and I don't have any intention of letting up.
And notice he kept to time.
If I talk fast, if you listen fast, I'll talk fast.
No, we appreciate that. We're trying to, we're trying to figure out how to give everyone an opportunity to speak, but then trying to, trying to keep to time. So appreciate, appreciate that.
Yep. Any other questions?
Very impressive. Thank you, Philip.
Thank you.
Great job.
I am, I'm always amazed. I feel like that the visitor's center just all of a sudden just erupted out of the ground. I was gone for a couple of weeks and I came back. There it was. So this group seems to be very growing and improving. And the wayfinding is very, very appreciated. We've gone back in the back a whole bunch of times back in the forest. So part of this, this property is garden and part of this property is forest. You can get in the forested property in the back corner, and even if you've been there a whole bunch, sometimes it gets confusing. So we were really enjoying the wayfinding.
Good. And I think in the future, one of the things I'm planning to do is an app that will be interactive with the trail map. Which shows you exactly where you are. So hopefully, we can get that done.
And there's also a bridge at a spot where it's hard to cross. And so that helps too, because sometimes you hit that spot, and if you didn't have the bridge, then you have to try to backtrack. But anyway.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So our next presentation is Marketing and Communications Update presentation. Drew Bailey's our director, and we very much appreciate him coming in this evening.
Philip, that was awesome.
And I guess you could get out your.
Yeah, I just, I put a hand out there that you don't really have to use that. That's just, I wanted something. Because I'm gonna go over a lot of different things, and then that way you have it later to kind of reflect on. Or if you have questions as I go along, you can write those down as well. But first, just want to say thank you for the opportunity to come and talk about our department. We get to work with a lot of you anyways. But I've had a couple of different requests as far as what to cover in this, which I'm excited about. One of the big ones is, of course, helping and explaining what is the communications department, what things do we do? Especially when it comes to the marketing side as well. So my goal and objectives, anytime I go into any type of like strategy meeting with my team or with other departments. I always focus on three things, the why, the what, and the message, or the how. I start off with the why and purpose because that's gonna help us just align with where we need to go. If we get that right, and if we understand that, then everything else will fall into place. So main goal, help you understand why we do what we do in the communications department, what that looks like. That what is, you know, that position, what is the actual things we do? How do we break that down? How do we understand it? And then the how, what things have we accomplished thus far this year, and then looking forward into the next year. So at the end of this all, hopefully, those things are clear. We're able to have, you know, answering any questions you may have or kind of collaborate on any ideas that you may have as well. So with the why and purpose, as you know, our tagline of the city is the journey starts here. And we have one of our campaigns, which is using Power Words, where every department picks out a Power Word. Or specific organizations that work closely with the city, they pick out a Power Word that describes and really emphasizes what that department does or tries to convey. And so for us in the communications department, we're just like anyone else, and our Power Word is community. Community starts here. It's a nice little play with community, but when we were brainstorming as far as what does communications really do? That's, it all came back to building, establishing, supporting, empowering our community. There's so many different pieces that we're involved with, and I kind of always refer to our department as the glue. It's not so much to be recognized, it's to make sure everything else gets held together, gets to be emphasized. Everyone else gets the line, the limelight shown on them. So that really drives what we do, and we try and have a why statement, which is what we believe. And so with that, we believe that community is built through intentional and purpose-driven communication. Everything we do has a purpose, it's genuine. We keep that idea of community in mind. And with that, that drives the things that we do. If we can do that, if we can focus on these things, then we're new, we know our heart's in the right place. And the communication, the messages we put out for the city, or for all the different departments we work with, it's gonna come across, it's gonna build trust, it's gonna do what. it's gonna come across, it's gonna build trust, it's gonna do what it needs to do. Now, as far as the what in the position, I, I thought it would be smart to kind of just break down what the Communications Department is. And what we came up with, and as I'm standing here, I'm just like one part. I know tomorrow Holly will be going through this and editing this video. So hello, Holly in the future. But I just want to say thank you to her and Shannon. They're just such a great support system to our team. And so even though I'm here talking, they're with me in this. So the Communications Department is an integrated marketing and communications-based department responsible for unifying its employees and associating departments, promoting and strengthening city businesses and organizations, and ensuring that city council, public meeting and event information is efficiently conveyed to Morgantown residents, visitors and the greater Morgantown area. There's a lot in there, but that's really, we do a lot in our department. And sometimes it can be confusing because we are involved in so many things. It's hard to pinpoint one thing. So I thought I'd break this up just into specifically communications and marketing. I thought it'd be easiest to take each one, pinpoint the key things that maybe comes to your mind already. And then after that, I'll go over as far as things that we've done this year, depending in those specific departments. So with communications, when we talk about communications, we're really focused on public media relations, crisis communication, internal communication and cross-department communications. And when we talk about marketing, we're focused on brand strategy, public engagement, social media and digital tools, and integrated marketing campaigns. I'm gonna touch on these as I go into this next session. That's all about the message. How do we go about doing things? What does that look like? So I kind of took that, that green line in there. That's part of, just again, from that part of what is the Communications Department? So when it comes into communications, that sentence of unify employees and associating departments and ensure that city information is efficiently conveyed, that's what, that's the driving force in there. And so when, we, we've done a lot with this. As I kind of talk, of course, we're gonna bring up new things that we haven't done in the past. My intention is to never look negatively on things that weren't accomplished in the past because I'm gonna give a shout out to Andrew. He was just so amazing. He did so much for the city and he did so much for me without him knowing. And he really set up our team for great success. So as I'm going, I never wanted to be a thought of, oh, what, you know, why didn't the past do that? Because there were, I can't tell you how many times I was going through like old files and finding like brainstorming notes of his, that he was right along that path. So thank you, Andrew, if you're ever listening to this thing. But our main thing was trying to build transparency and build trust. Again, this, when getting into this role, there was a lot of kind of confusion as far as like consistency. And so starting within our communication, we wanted to have just a comprehensive like communication strategy, something we can always fall back on, consistency, we build a foundation and a variety of different things. So one of the big ones is our crisis communication plan. Typically, most cities have a crisis communication plan. We didn't have anything set in place or anything like documented. So that was one of the first things that you know, Kim, me and Kim were investigating and worked a lot with. And to simply put it, we, we now have a document you can find on our website that goes over it. We have so many parties we're involved with, like Mecca, WVU, that they are the ones like really doing the work. So us as a city, our job is to provide resources. This document is like a one-stop shop. You can go there. You can figure out, okay, what's the process that we do as a city, or who are the correct parties to connect with? That was a big thing. And then on a smaller scale, these are, there's just so many little things you don't think of or kind of think, oh, someone actually comes up with that. But like a safety plan for a building, like if heaven forbid, like a shooter came into like the four thirty Spruce Street building, what, what do we do? Like, how is that communicated? Right? So coming up with stuff like that, getting everyone in our, in our group there on the same page, that's something we did. So on everyone's door, there's like a specific map-out plan step by step of what to do. These types of crisis calm things, you know, they're essential. They may be overlooked because it's just assumed that they're there, but they aren't. So that was a big thing we tried to knock out this year. Media relations, that's kind of the one that you would assume the most, especially in this type of position. And for us, it was just like establishing clear expectations. It was really easy. Like I have Ben over here to my li- right, I have like Will, so many different Dave, Aaron, there's so many great people that work in the media. And honestly, me stepping into this role, that was the part I was maybe the little most the most nervous for, but they've been just extremely gracious and kind to me and did not take advantage of my naivety or and experience in that area. And I'm very grateful for that. But they know that they can reach out to me. And at that point, it's our job as a Communications Department to essentially be the point guard. We get them to the right person that has the information. I'd say ninety-five percent of the time, I don't have the answer, so it's my job to hopefully get it from someone else. And that's an area that I know I'm gonna definitely strive to be, be better in and grow more. That's one of my personal goals this year. But again, can't say enough about the different media outlets we get to work with. They've been fantastic. And the last one is just inter, and I should say there's three listed here. There's so much more, but I don't want to tuck your ears off the rest of the night. So interdepartmental relations and training. This is something I'm just grateful for our HR team. They do such an amazing job and they have so many high goals they're trying to achieve. And it was great for me to kind of step in here and be a part of that. So whether that's improving communication between departments that maybe wasn't as clear as before, cleaning up maybe some of their processes, their documents, those are things we really try to do. If we can make someone else's life easier and make the transition or efficiency better, that's really what our job is as a commu- communications department. So we've assisted the HR in a lot of different ways as far as providing trainings and setting up future trainings and processes to improve that communication process between the departments. A lot going on there, and I'm sure you'll have questions about that. But let's talk a little bit about marketing. As most of you know, that's, that's my passion. That's where most of my background has been. And so that focus line, you know, promote and strengthen city businesses and organizations. I think this is where it comes into us really being the glue in a lot of ways as far as how can we improve the downtown? How can we make maybe voices that aren't heard as well? How do we shine on those? So one of the first things that, when I came into the role, which yesterday marked my one year, so I made it one year, survived thus far. But one of the first things is I try to meet with as many organizations, nonprofits, businesses, just whatever it may be, and try to understand how can we as a Communications Department help you? And most of, I would say, more than half of the time, it was dealing with marketing. It was like, okay, we don't have a marketing plan. We don't know what's the first step as far as, you know, just getting a brand or a tone of voice out there. And so that was fun for me, being able to work with these different organizations and help them in that way. And I think that's just a cool thing about our role is there is no like specific thing. We have opportunity to work with so many. Whether that be also the Morgan, you know, Partnership, Main Street, these other organizations that are in, like in the weeds of doing things, being on like their boards or their teams and helping them, collaborating with them on different ideas has been really fun. Social media is huge, obviously. Something a lot of people don't know is that we, my team of three, we manage seven different social media channels. Okay, so we manage the city's channel, the Met, the Ruby, Airport, Museum, Fire and Police. Now, if you've ever had a background in social media, you know, that's like an extreme amount. And that is, that's a lot. And we do that. And I think a lot of that comes down to, of course, having Shannon, our marketing coordinator. If we didn't have her, I don't know what we would do. It would be so difficult. Holly's amazing and we work really great. But having Shannon there has just been a huge blessing. We're able to accomplish so much more. When I got here, I I made it hard on them the first couple of months because I really piled on stuff. I, I really strove for us to get more and do more. And so, but they, they handled it like champs. And not just seven channels, but altogether a total of fifteen different platforms. So it's a lot going on, just, that's content creation. So that's us creating things and distributing them. That's not all the different requests we get of people coming in from our own building, from these other businesses coming to ask for help. So we're really busy. And on top of that, we produce and distribute three city blog channels. That's a new thing we started this year as well. That's been fun because that really gets other businesses and organizations. The goal of that is for them to send us the content and then we highlight them. So that's been really nice because it, it just, again, it's more focused on them than us. And then we have, of course, our two monthly newsletters. One thing I, we try to do when we rebrand the newsletter, and you all received that, the monthly one, is we try to humanize it more, try and make it more about our teams, the employees individually, make it much more positive. And that's, that's one of my favorite things is when that goes out and hearing all the responses, people talking about the specific employee that was spotlighted and how much they loved hearing about them. And that's just built like an overall better morale, which I, I, people start to realize, oh, it is great working here. And then, again, talking just about Shannon specifically, just because her role is unique and sort of new over the last couple of years. She works in tandem with Vincent in the Arts and Cultural Development Department to run the Summer Concert Series, which is insane with the amount that Shannon already does. And then you add that on top of it. And when I say work in tandem, she does all of their content. And so when Vincent needs something, Shannon's the one doing it. Which is, she's, she's amazing. And for her to start doing that when she was a new mom and had everything else going on, shout out to Shannon. She'll see this tomorrow. So good job, Shannon. But that's, that's a big part too. So we also run that. We're, we're, we're a big part of that. So as you can see with Mark Communications and Marketing, we're really, really busy. And we've done a lot and it's been extremely fun. I have these highlights as far as just top achievements. I'll just hit on them really quick. A city rebrand, as you know, with the big old sign right behind you, that has been probably our biggest one, the most time-consuming over this year. And all of you were a big part of that as well. And I think you, it was, and we did that all internally, which was a big push. But that was, that was, I don't know how else to say that was fun, but it was extremely challenging. It's been fun because it's, it continues to go. It's not something that's over. We're still working on that. There's a lot of pieces that go into that still. But being able to manage that and get all the different departments in line with what that's going, create this like unified vision of what we're going for is really cool. And I'll talk about future projects, but there's, there's quite a few big ones going with that. Social media revamp, that's something I already talked about. One of the struggles we had, and all of you will know this if you're on Facebook, is our Facebook struggled with negativity, like big time, negative comments. It was typically, it's like ten of the same people every time. But still, it's struggling, especially going into that, being like, how do we fix that? And there's really no big fix. But what we decided to do is pivot to a different type of way we address, like our Facebook content and what content we put on Facebook. We've seen a big, big reduction. It is reducing the amount of negative comments a lot. And then we also started Instagram page, which we didn't have. We started that about nine months ago. When I checked yesterday, we had eight hundred and forty-six followers. This is all organic. We average about two to three new followers per day. We have already a hundred and sixteen pieces of content on that Instagram. That's just Instagram. So as you can see, that's been a huge, huge, I can't overstate enough how, how great that's been for us as far as providing a good, solid image positivity. It's led to a lot of good conversations. And I, I look forward to see where that goes as well. Internal communication processes, I talked a little bit as far as getting everyone on the same page. We're trying to, of course, with the newsletter, with the different blogs, with a couple of different campaigns we're coming out with, we're really trying to focus on the Journey Starts Here campaign, getting every department involved in that, trying to showcase why it's important for each department. And then community building, this has been one of the most I don't know, I've received the most joy doing this. It's just kind of learning more about Morgantown and all the different community partners in it and the different projects that just randomly come up when you get to talk to someone and hear about either their struggles or things that they're trying to achieve that maybe they just need a little extra support. And I feel like my team's been able to be that for a lot of different situations, which has been very satisfying. So that's, that's it for two thousand twenty-three. I feel like we, we did so much. There's still a lot of growth to be held. I thought I would just show like a quick timeline as far as we try to chunk out our goals in our department as three, six, twelve, three months, six months, twelve months. And we have plenty of things, but these are some of like the big ones that stick out that probably will resonate more with you is this first three months is the Journey Starts Here campaign. What we're doing with that, there's two parts to that. We have been working with this company called CGI. And what they do is basically they do like free advertising for municipalities. And they are the ones that did our, if you go to our website, you see like this welcome video package that walks through and tells you like a bit about City Morgantown in various ways. They're the ones that do that. That's all for, free for us. They are also doing this awesome banner program for us where we, we got to, and it's all based on the Journey Starts Here. So you'll start seeing these around the city where there's these banners and it'll, and it has Power Words. So it'll be like, education starts here, family starts here, opportunity starts here. And those are all covered for free. Those aren't things we have to worry about. So there's that. But then on our social campaign, we're gonna be interviewing every department head and talking about their specific word. And you're gonna be seeing that on social. That's gonna be a big campaign we're running. So that's in the next three months. The next six months, we've already had a lot of change within the museum. So we're gonna be really pushing hard to just bring some more life into the, the Morgantown Museum. Morgantown Library, we're working hard to do the same thing. They're doing so many great things. And so we're just trying to be a big support system. And then, of course, with the airport. So it's these major partners we have. And we, we're just in the works as far as doing some pretty big campaigns with them going forward. And the last one is one that brings me the most stress is our city website. There's, there's just a lot of challenges we currently face with our city website. I don't think there's a day that has gone by that I don't hear some type of complaint or issue with the website. But it's much harder than you would imagine it to be. There's two types of websites when it comes to government things. It's either there's nothing on the website. It's very just like cut and dry. Or there's everything you can imagine on the website. And our website falls into the second category where there is everything you can imagine, every document you can imagine. So it's really messy. It's really hard as far as user friendliness. So we're, want to explore different options, but we understand that's just, it's a huge undertaking. And I can only do one huge thing per year. And that's, that's the big one. So we'll, we'll see how that goes. But we want to definitely, within this year, find options and see what we can do and what's best for everybody. So with that, I'll open the questions. I just want to thank you.
This is something very nice. So what questions, what questions do people have? Marketing or about some of the other strategies?
In terms of our YouTube, it's like, because we used to have just all of our video on the website, streaming video. And then when we came here, we just used the current infrastructure to like upload to YouTube. What do you think that's gonna, are we gonna change? Because the website streaming player was terrible. Are we gonna keep it on YouTube and like live streaming on that when we come back to the council chambers, whenever that happens?
That's a question that I like dread answering because there's a short answer and then there's like the long answer that will make you be like, oh, gosh. Long answer in a short way is currently with our YouTube channel, for some reason, it is not allowing us to up, like upload new content. We can do the like live streaming, it just goes. But for whatever reason, and we've tried, we've worked with IT, we've worked with YouTube, for whatever reason, we can't like upload like our original content, which is really problematic because we have a lot of good stuff. As far as transitioning with YouTube, until there's, I don't know, we're figuring that out. That's something that hopefully we'll find out by the end of the year. But we've talked about that because obviously there's, there's the partnership with here, but, and they did different before COVID. So that's, that's on the docket. But yes, that is definitely, that was something we're aware of and working towards. If you have suggestions, I would like them though.
From what you said, I guess my suggestion would be make a new page and link the new page.
We did that last week and it didn't work. We did it last week really though. You come to my office because we're gonna have a pow-wow about it.
Maybe we'll look at it. And I guess like in that same vein, I feel like, you know, we have accesses public access channel. We don't take much advantage of it.
Channel fifteen? Are you talking about channel fifteen?
Yeah, like, you know, we should have Wayne's World on there. No, but you know, things like that would be, I think there, if, if there was like concerted effort to like reach out to the community and say like, to like reach out to the community and say like, do you want a platform for X, Y, and Z? Cause like most of the time when you, I know, I know people don't watch that channel very often, but it would be a cool way to have like something on there that like, we could probably get a lot of like pretty, you know, free content out of people in the community that would just like to have like whatever they're trying to do out somewhere. Um, and I guess like if we were able to use the YouTube, like also have that on like, on our city's YouTube page to give like a platform to people that are doing cool stuff in the community and like, you know, so, um, yeah, I just like often when we turn that channel on, it's like, you know, it's like a bunch of, um, colored bars on the screen, you know? And it's something that we're provided for free and I just feel like we should take more advantage of, you know?
One hundred percent agree. Well, I've, in the past, because me and Holly are, that's one of Holly's goals this year is to kind of figure it out, because in the past it was, became more of like a PSA channel type of thing and a lot of just like B-roll stuff. And you're right, it's something we don't utilize, but I think it's just because when it was set up, it was also set up like before Holly and then there was that weird transition time where it was like, okay, so I feel like it's been put on the back burner, but it is a goal of ours, but I want you to like, let's meet, like before the end of the year, let's talk about some ideas, because I think that's a really good idea.
Thank you, alright, sounds great.
Bill's always good for a good marketing question.
You're doing well, thank you.
Wow, alright.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know how this is done or what the current role is in this, but do you have a large, I've watched Holly at work collecting photographs, so I know it's being done, but I'm not sure that the public or, uh, city council knows. Um, what types of photos you collect for, um, maybe future PSAs or, you know, how, what kind of a phone bank, a phone bank, what kind of a photo bank do we have? Um, and what types of things are being collected or do you want photos from other people or what?
That's a great question and the answer is it's, it's ginormous, because it's, we have it back, because one of our team goals this last year was to clean, clean it up, because it was a little messy. And so, going through, we have so much, so if you're, if you have a specific like area of focus, because we have it based on departments, we have it based on like city events, more likely we have some type of photo and good photo, um, that we can use. And so, yeah, we're taking more and more photos as we've started to do the blog, we're getting more content that way, because it's different like organizations sending, hey, here's these pictures that you can use. So, it, it's, it's really big, we can do just about anything, I think.
Well, in particular, I love photos of people doing things, obviously in Morgantown. Um, also, since we have, uh, user fee that supports roads, it's good to see road construction. Sometimes we've put up a sign, sometimes we've gotten ridiculed for putting up a sign, whatever, um, whatever we can do to highlight what our employees do, um, and I've seen photos being taken of that, so I just like to see, um, I've mentioned to you like on the front of the new website, whenever it comes, somewhere that you can change up, uh, some photo content every day, so that people can see something fresh and something that's easy for you all to load in, you know, three to five photographs that change, that change periodically, however that works for you, but I like people to see fresh content and, and I know I've seen the pictures being taken, so it's great when we can feature them.
Absolutely, agree.
And I know that's being done with, in other, other media sources or other, um, pages in Facebook and Instagram and so on.
Love, deal.
Any other questions, comments? Alright.
Thanks Drew.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting that all together. So, we're gonna be doing this with other of our partners. Alright, we have a Human Rights Day proclamation. Alright.
This one's shorter than the last one.
Good, I appreciate your, uh, it does not, it's too short, but just to the point, it's good. Um, proclamation, whereas, uh, International Human Rights Day is celebrated annually to commemorate the adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights by the General Assembly of United Nations on December tenth, um, nineteen forty-eight. And whereas this Universal Declaration laid the cornerstone for acceptance of the inalienable rights, equality, freedom, and justice for all, paved the way for adoption of over seventy human rights treaties that are now permanently enshrined both globally and regionally. And whereas the year twenty twenty-three marks the seventy-fifth anniversary of adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, a treaty that is credited with reducing human suffering and improving the daily lives of millions of people around the world by affirming the enduring commitment to the fundamental values of equality, justice, and human dignity. And whereas the Universal Declaration of Human Rights proclaims that every human is entitled to equal political, civil, economic, social, and cultural liberty simply by being human. And whereas it is the responsibility of every individual to uphold and protect the human rights of others. And whereas the city of Morgantown sits on indigenous people's land and was built upon generations of colonists, immigrants, and others who chose it as their home to unite, to create a diverse community where people can live and work harmoniously without fear of discrimination. And whereas the city of Morgantown is committed to maintaining laws and policies that provide opportunity and protection for its people to participate equally in local government, employment, housing, and public accommodation without regard to race, sex, religion, color, national origin, ancestry, blindness, disability, gender identity, sexual orientation, familial status, or veteran status. Mother Friday, Jenny Celine, the mayor of Morgantown, West Virginia, do this, do the, do with this proclaim, Sunday, December tenth, twenty twenty-three, is International Human Rights Day. And the city of Morgantown encourage all residents to work together in the upcoming year to nurture, respect, and protect the human rights enunciated in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and its extensions over the years. We'd like to pass this off to the, um, Human Rights Commission and we would like a tiny word on your upcoming event.
It has to be tiny?
Tiny.
I'll do my best, thank you.
Thank you.
On Sunday, November tenth, from four PM to six PM at the MAC, which is at one oh seven High Street, the original post office next to the new courthouse, it was the old post office, on the right-hand side of the street when you're going down High Street, yes. So, at that, we will be recognizing the award recipients for this year. They are the individual, and the criteria is that, not that you be a Morgantown resident or your place be, the business be based in Morgantown, but that you benefit the people of Morgantown. So, the individual award goes to Amanda Ray, who's a local attorney, who does a lot of domestic violence, child abuse neglect, uh, just sliding scale and freebies, and is all around a good person who does good things for those who need it and can't get an attorney otherwise, who turned away from legal aid for whatever reason. She's a, a one-woman Human Rights Commissioner of her own. The group award is going to the West Virginia Coalition in Homelessness. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, they have served four hundred and thirteen unique individuals, and I say unique, I mean unduplicated, not that they're unique, unique. Uh, so, four hundred and thirteen people, this calendar year, they've helped find housing and food and whatever they need. One of the things they do is they go to the hospital and people who went into the hospital homeless, they find a place to live and they come out. I'm in favor of this. They've been in business for ten years and in those ten years, they've served one thousand two hundred and forty Morgantown residents. So, I'd say since they've served four hundred and thirteen already this year, that they are stepping up their game. So, we would be proud to award them. Also, we are joining forces with the NAACP of Morgantown and Kingwood. They had a Thirteenth Amendment exhibition planned, same time that ours was to be there and students were supposed to submit art work to hang on the wall of the gallery and there was one submission. And so, I asked them to please bring that one submission to join ours and so their artist, a young woman, um, their work is hanging on the wall and during reception, we'll also hopefully be giving her certificate recognition for her civic engagement and taking part with doing her Thirteenth Amendment anniversary art.
Thank you.
In addition to this.
No, 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 a little short.
We need more people to apply to be Human Rights Commissioners.
Oh, very good.
Thank you. On account of there are supposed to be seven of us and there are three, so, four more people. You need to be a resident of the city of Morgantown, check the map, because it's tricky and you need to be willing to put a little bit of work into it and hopefully have demonstrated interest in human rights. We could use the help, thank you.
Thank you. So, now we have a series of public hearings. The first public hearing is an ordinance authorizing lease agreement with Jaclyn, uh, Summavilla at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. So, we're gonna open this public hearing if anyone wants to speak on this particular topic, this lease agreement at the Morgantown Municipal. So, we're gonna open, ask anyone if they're wishing to speak and then we're gonna close this one. And then item B is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property in the Fifth Ward District, Morgantown, Monongalia County, from the Monongalia County Development Authority. And we're gonna open this one, if there's anyone wishing to speak. On this topic and just this topic. And we're gonna close this one. Item C is an ordinance authorizing a lease with the West Virginia Department of Transportation, Division of Highways. We're gonna open this one. There is a public portion, but it just comes later. Now, we're gonna close this specific public hearing. Now, the, uh, item D is an ordinance authorizing a concession and lease agreement with Avis Budget Car Rental LLC at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. We're gonna open this public hearing. And we are, don't see anyone coming to the podium, so we're gonna close this one. See if we can make this move, there we go. The last public hearing is an ordinance annuling a portion of East Brockway Avenue and providing for dedication of additional public right of way to East Brockway Avenue. We're gonna open this one. If there's anyone wishing to speak on this item? And we're gonna close it. And we have unfinished business, boards and commissions, so we have some board and, boards and commission appointments, because we have, have not had an opportunity to do this for a while. So, who would, you wanna just start, start on at this end and if you have an appointment? Yep.
Okay, I would like to nominate Heidi Cook to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second, thank you. By acclamation?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I move to reappoint Chris Benison to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Good, alright. By acclamation? Right? How about you, you might have one?
Words and boundaries?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Jane Lefier of the Third Ward for the Ward and Boundary Commission.
Yep, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. By acclamation, yes?
Yes. And I would like to nominate Brett Bailey to the Land Reuse and Preservation Agency.
Wonderful, is there a second?
Second.
Great, alright, by affirmation?
Yep.
Yep, by acclamation, alright. Um, I can't remember, Deputy Mayor, do you have one? Okay. Appreciate everyone, um, that was applying to these boards and commissions and appreciate people's continued service. Now, we're to the public portion, so this is the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution, um, which means you would state your name, you would come to the podium, there's cute little flashing lights up there that help tell you when your time is nearing the end and, um, so I don't know if there's any names on a piece of paper there or if we just, and your name does not have to be on the piece of paper to, um, speak, uh, so at the end of whoever's listed, then if somebody wants more of an opportunity, they're welcome to. So, um, so we have Philip Smith on here, who has already spoken. So, is there anyone else who is interested in speaking? So, if there's any other items on the agenda that you wanna speak about, this is the moment. Do you want me to push any of these?
Okay.
No, you don't have to push.
Okay. I wasn't gonna speak, I'm Lindsay Jacobs, I live, um, at ninety-three Marion Street, I've lived in Morgantown, um, for going on two years now, um, born and raised West Virginia, but my husband Brennan and I moved back from, we had the opportunity to live in some of the fastest growing, biggest, um, cities that have tons and tons of development, things like that going on. So, when we came to Morgantown, we're super excited, because there's just so much potential here. We love living here and we look at Morgantown and we just see all the possibility, um, and we really love it and all the things that were talked about today, like those are all just beautiful assets in the community and I say that to ground what I'm about to say, you know, I say that because what I'm about to say comes from a place of love and what I'm about to say is, is criticism. Um, you know, I think it's a bit hypocritical or ironic, um, whatever you wanna call it, that we're doing a proclamation on human rights, well, housing is a human right under international law, um, and yet, you know, we're here discussing a development today that wouldn't ostensibly include any housing. I don't know any city on the rise that is approving developments that do not include housing, when we have a nationwide housing shortage, um, we have a homeless, you know, every place in the country is experiencing, um, increases in visible homelessness and so, it just seems outrageous to me that, um, that, that that's sort of where we are on the Richwood development, approving a rezoning that would not be inclusive of housing. It's also a bit hypocritical, because in the last couple of weeks, I'm here in my personal capacity, but I know in my professional capacity, um, we've received reports of, um, the city not following its own policies as it relates to encampment evictions, um, ticketing folks who have nowhere else to go because the shelter's full, those things are not in line with human rights. Um, and so, if we're gonna honor human rights, we really need to not just honor it in word through proclamation, but we actually need to honor it in our practices, which we are not doing. Richwood, we wanna see that redeveloped, it's literally in our backyard, um, it needs to be redeveloped, I said in my email, it's an eyesore, but we've been given this binary choice, it's either take what's been given to us or we don't get anything at all. And that lacks so much imagination and just so much creativity and I think it's a real shame that the city is gonna allow itself to be backed into that kind of corner, um, when we have so much on the line, like there's so much opportunity for that redevelopment. Um, you know, if we create housing there, any kind of housing, like I said in my email, that relieves sort of downstream pressure and opens up more housing for folks who, um, are not economically privileged, right? And so, um, I guess I'm talking about two things, one is my disappointment with how we treat, um, folks who are experiencing homelessness, folks who are poor, uh, in Morgantown and I think it's opening the city up to liability, I think you all know that, um, legal liability, um, but it's also inhumane and it's out of line with, um, sort of every recognizable, um, international opinion or guidance or health guidance on how to deal with the problem of homelessness, so I find that just tremendously disappointing. Um, and then Richwood is, is the other thing I'm, I'm speaking on, which is to say, I approve, or I support redevelopment, I, I support a Richwood redevelopment project, I think we were misled, I, I think Danielle's done a great job, like stewarding that project and trying to keep people informed and really ask tough questions and push it in the right direction. Uh, I feel like we were misled, we thought we were getting a PUD and now we're getting sort of medium-use, commercial, strip mall kind of, uh, development and I, I, I think that's a real shame and I just encourage you all to sort of think outside the binary, you don't have to take either one of those choices and, um, again, I keep referring to my email, but I think it's either like nefarious or negligent to allow ourselves to be backed into a corner where, um, you know, we literally only have two choices. So, in its current form, I oppose the rezoning, um, and yeah, I want us to do better as it relates to homelessness and housing. And yeah, I want us to do better as it relates to homelessness and housing. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there, yes, is there anyone wishing to speak on any subject? City related, hopefully. Yes.
Yeah, so my name is Leslie Nash. I live at 416 Park Street, so I'm just up in second ward here. I am also a fairly recent-ish transplant to West Virginia, so I have been living here two years as of February. I'm from Kentucky originally, but have moved kind of all over the place. And my background is in, actually in human rights. So I'm a lawyer now, but my background is in international human rights law. And so, you know, I was, I'm actually really thrilled that Morgantown is, you know, doing a proclamation for Universal Declaration of Human Rights. I think it's an under-recognized, really phenomenal international, national and local tool for communities to leverage as a way to say, look, like this is what we believe in, this is what we support, these are what we recognize as our real like human values. You know, that being said, I, with someone, as someone who does have a background in human rights, kind of working really across the world, I've worked in the United Kingdom, I've worked in Ethiopia and in Thailand on, on human rights of all sort of shapes and sizes. Coming back to America now, I work as an attorney, I do civil rights work. And I will say, one of the most difficult human rights areas that I have ever had any sort of professional interaction with is the human rights of our unhoused neighbors. So I'm echoing a little bit of what Lindsay Jacobs just said in her comment, but you know, I do think as a community that I have found very welcoming, that I found like a great place to live. I moved here from New York City actually previously, so some big changes, but a really wonderful place to live. It has some like really great things going for it as a small town in Appalachia. I do think that this is one of the areas where as a community, as a, as a city and as just a place to live, I, I think, you know, we see ourselves falling down a little bit and not really living up to the promise of what we could be in terms of, you know, really progressive and human and welcoming policies towards members of our community who are unhoused or who are facing difficulties. You know, I think it is, it is difficult as a, as a person to see poverty of that kind, to see people who are suffering through the sorts of things that many people who are unhoused are going through. Whether it's simply economic deprivation, whether it is substance use disorder or a mental health crisis or trauma of any kind, domestic violence, anything like that. It's difficult to look at that because I think we often feel that we don't, there's nothing that we as individuals can do. And, and sometimes it's true. As an individual person, there's really sometimes not much you can do to help a person who doesn't have a place to live or who doesn't have, you know, money to rent or is living out of their car or is struggling with addiction or substance use or mental health issues. But as a community, we really do have those resources to make meaningful, really progressive and incredible human rights and civil rights based impacts in the lives of our unhoused neighbors. You know, and I, I know, for example, there was a huge struggle with relation to a warming shelter this year. You know, I know we finally did get something sort of pulled together, but I know the beds are limited and it's only open when temperatures drop below a certain level, which is, you know, from a personal perspective, really horrifying. Like how are you, are you, you know, if you're unhoused, how are you supposed to know? Well, it's gonna be 42 degrees tonight, so no bed for me. Versus, you know, it's 39, so hopefully if I can get up to the shelter, they'll have a bed open for me, right? These are not policies that live up to the values and the, the ideals of the U D H R. And so, you know, I really just, as a community, kind of encourage us to be progressive and forward-thinking about our communal response to what is really an increasing local, national, international crisis of people not having a stable place to live. So thank you guys for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Once again, I would like to invite anybody who would like to contribute to human rights in Morgantown, please join the commission. To him, an attorney with a postdoc in international human rights and humanitarian law. And I see the problems here. Pardon?
How many people?
Four of them.
Four?
Four.
Four people.
Only four, just four. And it sounds like there's some passionate people here tonight. So it would be great to have them join us. I would like to have people who are excited about it to be on the commission. So please do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello. Good afternoon, council. My name is Brendan Williams and I live at 93 Marion Street. I do want to propose a couple of solutions to the development, the Richwood development. As my wife had mentioned, we definitely want to see in that areas desperate need of, of, of development. And I know before y'all tonight is kind of a tricky situation with the B1 zoning. And not to get too technical, the big issue with the comprehensive plan from 2013 was that area, area was called for predominantly residential use. And what have others have alluded to is that this proposed zoning has very limited, maybe even just a token amount of housing in it. And I don't think that's anyone's fault. It's just kind of what meet the goals of, of the development there. So the solution I would propose is perhaps whether it's asking the applicant to amend their application to allow for an overlay for the exact same boundaries that they are proposing to rezone. If they would just include that additional housing that everyone's seeking, I think that would be beneficial to the development authority, allowing more options for them to create housing and to, if, if market forces are, limiting some of the development opportunities there on, on those properties. But it also would stay in line with the comprehensive plan that not only from 2013, but the most recent one that is being contemplated, as well as the study area I know too that wasn't technically adopted. But I do think that could be done through council in this first and second reading without having to do an additional text amendment to amend the B1 zoning. But I appreciate y'all's time. I've had the, the pleasure of serving with two of y'all in the traffic commission and I know this is a, a bright group and that there, there can be a win-win scenario for the community and for the property owner. So thank you all for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? This is your moment. All right. We're gonna close the public portion. Appreciate everyone coming out. Now we have some consent agenda items. These items are voted on as a, as a unit. And if someone on council like to remove an item to be voted on separately, they can feel free to do so. Otherwise, we may go through them and vote on them as a group. These are all items that have already had a first reading and full discussion a couple of times. Item A, consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with Jaclyn Somavilla at Morgantown Municipal Airport. The first reading was 10/17/2023. Item B is consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance authorizing purchase of property in 5th Ward District, Morgantown, Monongalia County from the Monongalia County Development Authority. The first reading was 11/21/2023. Third item is consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance authorizing a lease with the West Virginia Department of Transportation Division of Highways. The first reading was 11/21/2023. Item D is consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance authorizing a concession and lease agreement with Avis Budget Car Rental LLC at Morgantown Municipal Airport. The first reading was 11/21/2023. Item E is consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance annuling a portion of East Brockway Avenue and providing for dedication of additional public right of way to East Brockway Avenue. First reading was 11/21/2023. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. And then we'll pause for one second. And then we're gonna ask the clerk if she would please call the roll. Deputy Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Koweki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. I was on to the next item, pardon.
All right. Now we're on to new business. Item A is consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the 7th Ward of the city of Morgantown. Tax District 15, tax map 6, parcel 62, commonly known as 501 Van Boris Road from professional residential and office, pro district to R3 multifamily residential district. Amending Article 1331 of the Planning and Zoding Code of the city of Morgantown as shown in the exhibit here to attached and declared to be a part of this ordinance as if the same were fully set forth herein. And between our planner and our attorney, we'd love a little additional information.
We have the mayor, members of council, city manager, house.
After consideration, the planning commission found that the proposed map amendment was consistent with the city's 2013 comprehensive plan as well as the 2023 comprehensive plan that is going through the adoption process now. The African is here if you have any questions as well as myself. Thank you.
Thank you. So what did the planning commission suggest?
The planning commission found that the proposed zoning amendment to change 501 Van Boris from a pro district to an R3 multifamily residential district was consistent with both comprehensive plans, the one that we're under now, which is 2013, and the one that's to be adopted later this month. And recommended that it was consistent.
That it was?
Consistent. Yes, ma'am.
Why don't we ask if we can have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you. And then if you would like to, if you have anything you would like to add?
This is currently an apartment building at, along Van Boris there, or Patterson, Van Boris. Yeah. The Patterson Corridor. And they came to the planning commission hoping to turn some of the units in that building into a hospice facility, which is not available anywhere else in Morgantown. And originally had come asking for a B2 zoning. The planning commission was hesitant to consider that because it is adjacent to a residential zone. But we were able to work through staff and the applicant to suggest an R3 that, that meets their needs as well as future needs of the city. And we have every intention as a city of looking at that PRO zoning and maybe changing some of the uses there. So in the future, it may be appropriate for the PRO zone if we decide to allow that use there.
I walk by that site really often and I heard some good things about.
Hi.
The proposed change, yes.
If I may speak to, to the matter. My name's Charlie Russell here on behalf of the applicant and West Virginia carrying the proposed purchaser. As Councilor Trumbull mentioned, our proposed use of this property will be to take the 3rd floor and turn it into an inpatient hospice facility, which currently, West Virginia carrying has patients traveling from Morgantown to Elkins for these services. And as you mentioned, it is on Van Boris. And we went back and forth between B2 and settled on R3 because the only thing that rightfully defines a hospice center in the zoning code is a nursing home. That's the, that's the closest thing. So nursing home is, is permitted in an R3 as well as the multifamily dwelling, which the property currently is owned by the Quanis Club, used for senior living. I believe 60 and older is who lives there and that use will, will continue. So, so the mixed use, senior living and inpatient hospice care fits in the R3. And I will note, the only access to this property is from Van Boris. There, there's no legal access to, to the Windsor and Drummond that runs behind it. So there's no, there would be no traffic coming through those neighborhoods. And probably could never feasibly be done just because of the elevation right there. If you, if you've made that right angle turn, it's, it's, it's down over the hill. So that, that's why we're here before you. I can answer more questions if, if you have any. If not, I believe this is a, a good benefit for the community and fits with the comprehensive plan regardless of, of our proposals.
Thank you.
So we really need to look at this as, is R3 the good fit? And I think you've made a good description of that.
That's good. Good service to have.
Any other?
Go to the question.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Koweki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Passes unanimously. Item B, consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the 5th Ward of the city of Morgantown. Per Exhibit A from R1A, single family residential district and R2, single and two family residential district to a B1 neighborhood business district. Amending Article 1331 of the Planning and Zoding Code of the city of Morgantown as shown in Exhibit B here to attached and declared to be a part of this ordinance as if the same were fully set forth herein. And if we could hear from the planner and the attorney and whoever else wants to.
Good evening again, mayor.
Thank you.
The ordinance before you would, for consideration on first reading, would rezonate properties along Richwood Avenue from their respective districts to a B1 neighborhood district. And doing so, the proposed amendment would allow for a mixed use development opportunities in the Woodburn neighborhood and adjacent to downtown Morgantown. After review, the planning commission in November found that the proposed map amendment to be consistent with the 2013 plan as well as the 2023 comprehensive plan and further recommended that this zoning map amendment be enacted. If you have any questions, please let me know and the applicant is here to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
All right. I would love to have a motion and then we can just kind of keep going if we have more questions and commentary. Is there a move to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Second, thank you. All right. The applicants want to?
We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Can you explain sort of the property that is owned by the applicant versus the property that's being changed, like with regard to housing?
Yeah, so I'm gonna need to grab.
Yeah. I'm asking because there's part of the property that's being rezoned and part of the property that will remain what it is.
My apologies.
Can I ask a question of the attorney while we're waiting?
Absolutely. Please ask a question of our attorney while we're waiting. Let's make good use of time.
Attorney Simonton, what is the process for doing an overlay versus a text amendment? Because I have every intention of putting forth a text amendment for the B1 zone to include more housing types. But what, what's the process for adding an overlay?
Well, the, the general process to amend the zoning code is prescribed by, by state law and by your city code. And a petition to amend the zoning code, as you have before you, there is a public hearing scheduled before the planning commission and then city council considers whether the change is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And acts with the advice of the planning commission on that. There's, there's no procedural difference between, in, in council's role between amending the text of the zoning ordinance and creating a, effectively a new map designation or map amendment, which would be an overlay district. Those are usually considered by the planning commission first to determine or get a recommendation on whether they are consistent with the comprehensive plan. I think. I think um any kind of functional differences may be better addressed by um Mr. Yeager, but as he discussed at the committee of the whole, the uh the overlay districts the city has in place have uh have usually resulted from uh some community planning sessions that define the area, define um why an overlay is needed there. As far as how council amends the zoning ordinance, though, um, I I don't think there's a procedural difference between establishing an overlay district and making a text amendment to the code.
Would a text amendment be? Obviously, that would be more general so that every time, every time that that came up, that would be included. Whereas if we did some sort of an overlay, that would be just for that district.
So an amendment to the text of the ordinance, um, you know, it it depends on what the amendment to the text is. An overlay is creating a a new district that kind of lays over top of one of the regular zoning classifications.
And a text amendment would make it so that more housing types would potentially be allowed in every B one zone, right?
Yes, if the if the text amendment you're discussing is uh an amendment to the text of the B one zoning classification to allow multifamily and two-family dwellings, for instance, then that text amendment would apply to all B one districts within the city. Whereas if the council were to adopt uh an overlay district that allowed multifamily and two-family dwellings in a set area, then that would only apply within that area, and that area would need to be defined by the overlay district.
And both would have to go through the planning commission first.
I don't, I don't know offhand whether that is a requirement if council wanted to try to incorporate as part of this amendment. It has not been done in my experience. As I said, the requirements for city council to amend the zoning code are just prescribed by West Virginia Code eight A dash seven dash nine. There's been a petition, there's been a recommendation by the planning commission to the city council. I think the the applicant notified council at the committee of the whole meeting that they have no opposition to add in permission for two-family dwellings and multifamily dwellings to the permitted uses in the property they're attempting to rezone.
If if I may, I would I would go beyond saying we have no opposition. We would welcome that. And on that note, Eric Carlson with uh Morgantown Area Partnership and the Mon County Development Authority, two sixty-five Spruce Street. Uh, and um, Madam Mayor, your your question earlier was about the difference between the redevelopment site as a whole and the rezone that we have proposed that is, what is it, first reading tonight? As you can see on the map on the screen, I have highlighted in red the proposed B one zone. And around that, you can see three other types of zones. We have the R one A, the R two, and the B two. And when you look at those zones, which are part and will be continue to be part of our full redevelopment, every single housing use that Morgantown City Code allows is in each of those zones when combined. And furthermore, to state that there is not, well, housing will absolutely one hundred percent be a part of our redevelopment, particularly in the B one zone. That is the core of this project. And to have a mixed use development, it would not work without a daytime and nighttime economy. You have to have people either working or living in buildings that have first floor retail, which a- as you uh may know, in the B one zone, you're not allowed to have a one-story building. So strip malls are not an option. These are have to be multi-story buildings and cannot be taller than forty feet above finished grade. So that these will be absolutely uh housing components put into this to replace, at the very least, the number of housing uh units that will be demolished and have been vacant for some time.
You're confident in making guarantees on what's going to be developed there?
No, I'm not confident in making guarantees on what's going to be developed there. I said there will be housing. I'm not gonna make.
And what you just said was that there would be, what you just said was that there would be residential to replace at least what is there now.
I'm gonna turn back to the planner for our developer. It was, that is the intent.
Okay, so you're making a guarantee about what's going to be.
The intent of the redevelopment is to include housing to at least replace what has been vacated and what will be torn down. The ability to do a mixed use redevelopment does not work without housing, flat out.
There's there's housing that's surrounding it, right? So.
And there will be housing inside of it.
I I understand what was said at the public hearing. Um, and and what was said then and what's being said now are guarantees about what's to be developed there when we've been instructed since the beginning of this development to not be making guarantees about what's to be developed there, and I don't know how that could be made. I I and I'm.
I'm not gonna say there is going to be X types of buildings, Y type of uses. What is being said is there will be housing, and the intent is that the amount of housing will be at least that that is being replaced.
Yeah, so um and 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 the other concern I have here is that with you, you're saying that everybody's okay and you're you're fine with having an overlay for residential.
Or text amendment.
Yeah, yeah, yet we cannot zone this R three. And and so that, do you, the way that that concern comes into play right then is that there are specific things that have been targeted from the B one that this is that is going to be developed here and that and that we have an idea of what those might be. We're not being told what they might be. But there's a reason why we would disallow those. And and it's okay to add them back into the B one because we've already targeted things in there that we want to build. And but then, at the same time, I'm also getting a guarantee that these houses, that there will be housing units to replace what's already there. That's very concerning.
So the reason there is nothing that can be stated at this point is because there's no planning and earnest that has begun because it cannot and will not begin, until which point we have the entitlement for the redevelopment.
And yet you're telling me that all the housing is going to be replaced.
That is what we are working with our developer to ensure. That is one of the reasons why the city of Morgantown, the county of Montague, and West Virginia University have all taken part in participating with this project to ensure that through the Mon County Development Authority, there's a community-minded organization that can usher this development to ensure that it is something that resembles a community-defined redevelopment. And that is why we have been taking this project on for the last three years, to ensure that when it is redeveloped, it is done so in a way that Morgantown can be happy. And when you ask about R three versus uh B one, this is a comparison of, and it's just very far away, I know, so I've made it colorful.
We've looked at.
Anything that is in green is something that was allowed in B one and allowed in R three. Anything that is in orange is something that was permitted in R three, but it's conditioned, I'm sorry, that was permitted in B one, but it's conditional in R three. And anything that is in red was either conditional in B one or permitted in B one and flat out not allowed in R three. And in that, we are seeing things that would be to a point where this project would not be able to be developed, that it would miss those true mixed use type of of uses that are fundamental to doing this type of project.
Can you give a few examples of things?
Absolutely. Uh, well, restaurant and family restaurant are the only things that are allowed as far as restaurant. Uh, retail, sales, establishment, not allowed. Restaurant, fast food, that's not allowed, but uh it we have as.
I know you're in drive-throughs anyway.
We're not, yes, but that would, and I don't know if fast casual counts as fast food or counts as family. So there would be things like a Chipotle or a Kdoba would be allowed into a project like this. Uh, other ones that are not allowed in the R three, veterinary clinic tavern, brew pub.
We already disallowed tavern, right?
No.
That was already.
No, tavern is an absolutely vital.
Amendment?
No, the items that were at the request.
Could you, could you read over those just for me?
So these came at the request of the neighborhood association. We have had, over the last three years, at least a half dozen meetings with the Woodburn Association of Neighbors and plan to continue having more uh in the future as this project continues on. And they have requested, and uh we have through the subdivision process, prohibited ourselves from assisted living facility, charitable, fraternal, or social organization, churches, places of worship, dance or social club youth, drive-through facility, emergency shelter, funeral home, golf course, group residential facility, group residential home, kennel commercial, outdoor flea market, passenger station, motor bus railroad, pawn shop, reuse of clothes slash vacant school or church. And once again, these were brought to us by the Association of Neighbors, and we agreed to prohibit those from this B one rezone.
Do you have any questions?
And one thing to, I wanna show, this is the overall area. You can see what was read on the previous screen. Sorry, it's oriented differently. Uh, is read also on this screen. And the aim of it is to show the connections that this redevelopment will have with our community. The Greenmont neighborhood, the Woodburn neighborhood, WVU's campus, and downtown. Uh, the twenty thirteen comprehensive plan recommendations for Richwood that permit higher density residential patterns, permit mixed uses, incentives to assemble and consolidate parcels for redevelopment, as I said, the city, the county, and the university have definitely done that, and we appreciate that. Thank you. Design standards that are appropriate to the location and scale of the corridor, the B one requires that such. Transition to lower-density residential adjoining the Woodburn neighborhood. As you can see on this, we are leaving those areas that have the R one A and the R twos, as is to be that buffer. Infrastructure improvements supporting higher densities, including sidewalks, pedestrian crossings, and street lighting. Sidewalks are required on every parcel in the B one zone. And the twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan, the on page seventy-one, under the header, increase opportunities to develop diverse housing options near schools, parks, shopping centers, I'm sorry, schools, parks, shopping districts, and employment centers. Complete neighborhoods include a variety of land uses, parenthetically, residential, commercial, civic, and recreational areas, building types and housing types to increase access to amenities and services for diverse and multi-generational neighbors. A mix of residential dwelling types will be located within walking distance and or biking distance from amenities. And as you see here, if you want to go a half mile to the west from our redevelopment, the center of our redevelopment's area, you're getting wet. You're gonna be in the river. So anything from the River Inn is within a half mile of this redevelopment, and that quarter mile and half mile also includes, if not entirely encompasses, the Greenmont and Woodburn neighborhoods as well, not to mention WVU campus. Almost directly adjacent to our redevelopment zone, to our re-rezone area. Uh, down in the B twos, you can see the very rooftop of Unity Manor, senior living housing, one hundred twenty-some uh senior living residents, and also, as you know, on WVU's campus, dormitories. So not to mention the residents in the Woodburn area, Greenmont. We span the generations that are required. We give them an opportunity to walk, hopefully bike, or if need be, drive to the amenities that will be placed in this redevelopment area, as well as the folks that are living in this redevelopment area that would then be able to visit friends in these neighborhoods or walk downtown or walk to campus for their jobs, if not having a job in that redevelopment area itself.
I have a question for Ricky.
I will step aside.
Um, Ricky, we have a question for you. As part of the city's rezoning process, what type of notification was given to neighbors for public comment, public input? Do we?
Yeah.
It's my understanding, we mail out things.
So, yeah, so I say a little required to put a legal notice in the paper, and that was done before the planning commission hearing. We send a neighbor notice out to everybody within two hundred feet of the properties to be rezoned.
Do you know how many of those that was?
Oh, it was a, it was a big list, obviously, just because the number of parcels and the footprint of that area. It was, it was probably at least thirty or forty, I would say, off the top of my head. And then the third is that we actually went out and put red signs throughout the district at key locations, intersections, to try to also let the public know that's walking, biking, uh, driving through the area, to let them know that that was, that this was happening.
I got a lot of comment. I would say two months ago, when this was first starting to stir up again and they came to the neighborhood. This week, I've received two comments, um, one for, one against. So I was just curious how many notices we had sent out because I don't, I don't know, what do they say? Silence is complacency. Am I to take that, that if people aren't yelling at me, then they're okay with it, or?
No, I mean, I, we we got some questions in the office, and when we prepared the packet for planning commission, I believe we received three comments that were included in the packet. One came the day of. Um, but um, it 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 just depends sometimes what the response is. If it's a high-traffic area and people notice a red sign, sometimes that will trigger.
Notices were sent out prior to the planning commission meeting, not necessarily prior to.
They have to be, they have to be sent out prior to the planning commission meeting by um city and and state ordinances, yeah.
And there was no additional thing sent out this time?
No.
Just for the November?
Not for the committee of the whole or for this particular meeting. Yeah, but there would be a legal notice for the public hearing on the sixteenth of January. Yes.
I'm in a tough position because I personally hate it, but I don't think that most of my neighbors do, for whatever reason. I would like some sort of reassurance that housing is is going to be guaranteed in the area, and not just housing, but a a mix of housing types, and we have every intention of doing the text amendment. But as I said during the committee of the whole meeting, I can put it, I can make it permissible in that area all I want, but that doesn't guarantee what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
I've said time and time and time, and I guess one more time now. I do feel that the neighborhood was misled about what we were getting. But I do also appreciate that you all have been willing to reengage recently since your plans have.
Solidified.
Well, I was gonna say, I don't wanna say your plans have changed because I feel like this has probably quietly been the plan all along.
It was not.
I know you keep telling me, this is why you shouldn't work with your friends, Eric.
I I don't lie to friends or people I've never met.
I I, I don't know, I don't like it.
Uh, just, I guess, my final comments on it would be, I don't find this to be in line with the comprehensive plan and therefore should be dismissed on those grounds.
What part of the comprehensive plan?
I think you did a great job reading the parts of the comprehensive plan it's not in line with, which is allowing for a diverse use, uh, mix of housing types, um, which it clearly cannot do.
Increase opportunities to develop diverse housing options near schools, parks, shopping districts, and employment centers.
There's one type of housing option.
We would welcome more, but once again, I wanna point out that this this redevelopment does that.
Yeah, I'm I'm making comments now, okay? I, so that that's my fear. Um, and well, not just my fear, it's it's my belief this doesn't follow the comprehensive plan. And it's, like I said in the committee of the whole meeting, I would love to see this property developed. I don't. I I feel very trepidatious about the idea that this has been held in the way that it is and that we're asking be asking asking to have changed it now. If we do go ahead with changing this, which we probably will, um, I would ask that people, you know, pay attention and keep a close eye on what's going on here because you know, pay attention and keep a close eye on what's going on here because, because the change is, is worrisome to me, even with the best of intentions. And, yeah, with us disallowing diverse housing types, I, I don't believe that we're following the, the letter of the law with the comprehensive plan. And I, I would welcome seeing this come back to us with an overlay or perhaps if we were to change B1 forever.
We would welcome that.
But that's not what we have before us today, so.
Well, if, sorry.
So, you know, it's, it's a pretty fraught decision and, and I, I'd like to see all those houses torn down, I'd like to see a good intentional project go forward. This project right now, in the way that it's being presented to me, is, is, it's not one that I, I feel is in the best interest of the city going forward in, in the terms, in terms of this, this area. I, I find it very disturbing in the way that it's, it's being presented to us and that will be all I have to say.
Well, there's the old axiom, if you want to go fast, you go alone. If you want to go far, you go together. And this has been a partnership from the beginning. We purchased these properties some 37 months ago and since then have been working with this entity, both city staff and council. We've been working with the county, we've worked with the university, we've worked with our development partners at East End Development LLC. In, in my history, partnerships can be incredibly difficult and incredibly frustrating. You don't always end up getting what you want through those partnerships, but when you look back on it, in the end, you realize what a much better outcome you end up having than you would have if you went on your own and/or had total control yourself. I think of the project that I worked on with a Big Ten university as a, someone in Director Jaeger's capacity for a city. And we would come out of meetings cursing our colleagues across the table and butting heads for months, if not years. I would ask the mayor to call the university president and tell, and help explain to him how incredibly wrong his people were. Unfortunately, each and every time, he neglected to follow my request. And because that's a point where you, he knew in order to have those conversations, it needed to be very, very limited when there was something seriously, seriously wrong. And there never was. So we have had not anywhere close to an identical situation in this process, but there have been fits and starts, there have been opportunities that we hoped would go one way and because we worked with our partners and were able to find a path that we feel, felt worked for our community, that we were going this way. And that is the beauty of not only the Morgantown area partnership where we call ourselves the partnership for a reason because we truly are a group of partners, but the Mon County Development Authority, which is one of the legs in our stool, that are able to hold a project like this at serious financial distress for 37 months. So we can get to a point where we have worked with a multitude of stakeholders, including the Neighborhood Association, put in opportunities for blocking different types of uses, but then also putting in this B1 process that gives us multiple checkpoints. The initial subdivision that came here to the planning commission that was approved on November 9th was itself a checkpoint. Six to one was voted that it matched both the 2013 and the 2023 comprehensive plans. We have the first reading tonight, second reading with the public hearing on the 16th. After that, we have site plans that go into the development department's office and they make sure that our projects, whichever ones they may be, meet the requirements of the whatever zone, whether it's the B1, the B2, the R1 or the R, or the R1A or the R2. And then again, one of the reasons we did the subdivision, where we turned all of this into one parcel, was so that each and every building that comes out of it has to be subdivided again, which means it once again has to go to the planning commission, at which point the planning commission, a public body that's appointed by this, this body, includes representation from this body, has the ability to say, does this project in fact meet what we have to do for a subdivision to break it out of the current parcel? That is what the Mon County Development Authority has put on the line to make sure that what is built is something that Morgantown and Montague County can be happy for, happy about for generations to come.
I wanted to recognize for a minute what it took to assemble all these parcels, that it's very rare in a city that anyone has the patience to actually put together a set of parcels of this size so that in an area that was clearly lighted and, and undone, outdated homes could then be redeveloped. And then that this entity, these entities working together, rather, went from kind of talking about B3 to B1, which I didn't think they would come back with for anything. So the fact that B1 was contemplated and B1 is what is sitting before us should be considered a triumph of advocacy of a number of people, willingness to compromise on behalf of the developers, just a, I think, a really great idea. And it's because of the housing above of people who will make this development alive versus something that closes down at night, which is the sort of strip mall model and doesn't have the liveliness of the neighborhood that surrounds it. So the fact that this is being planned for nighttime and daytime economy, the fact that it will have housing, that that is desirable, I don't know of developments in cities that require the upstairs that don't have some housing in there. It, it would not make sense because the whole idea is to have your people right there and that's what makes your businesses thrive and makes it a magnet for other area, other people in the surrounding area to come and, and use it. I think it'd be great, our downtown is rather small and I think it's great to enlarge that idea of having housing above and businesses below in the area so that we have a little bit more of a commercial possibilities. And I think it's kind of sized, correctly sized for people because it's not an enormous area and it's not a tiny area, so...
Yeah, B2, which was initially looked at, has a height maximum of 72 feet and above finish grade and this is a 40-foot height above finish grade maximum.
Which is a much different human scale type of development. So anyway, I can see the concerns, I would look forward to a future text amendment that would improve the possibilities for residential housing all over the city in B1, B1 district to have that ability to mix the housing uses. But right now, tonight with what's before us, I am in favor and will be voting for it.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, I honestly think...
One of, one of seven here. I think what's out of line with our comprehensive plan is our land use table, honestly. I think that's what's out of line. We have these neighborhood business districts and other districts that don't even allow for that missing middle type housing that we're saying we need. So I'm totally in favor of changing some of those zonings when it comes to housing. Attorney Simonton, you tell me what to do. What's the, what is the quickest way to get housing allowed in it? Like you said, I asked if both options would have to go through the planning commission and you said, oh, I don't know, maybe not necessarily. What can I do?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's accurate. The, the quickest way would be, I, I suppose council could entertain a, a motion to amend the ordinance to establish an overlay district covering these parcels subject of the amendment and in that district allowing two-family dwellings and multifamily dwellings. I don't know if from a planning perspective, that's the, the best way to approach it, but I suppose it would be the quickest.
And, and one item, Councilmember Trump, we discussed briefly, the use tables only specifies grocery store, it does not specify grocery store versus supermarket or large grocery versus small grocery. And I, I think that is something that is another one of those oversights in the B1. A Kroger is not going to or nor should go into a B1 unless Kroger has a 4,000 square foot footprint plan.
A Bodega type.
But, yeah, but the, but the co-op could and should, or the old co-op, something like that, could and should be in a B1 zone because that is absolutely something where you walk out of your house to go grab something rather than get in your car and, and wind down the hills into Saberton to Aldi or to the Kroger down there is something that would be, I think, as you're looking at an overlay, or I think in this case, that would be a great addition to a text amendment to allow for that and the B1s around the community as well.
Certainly. And you, as well as everyone else, has heard me say, like, I'm so excited to pass the new comprehensive plan because then the planning commission can actually get to work looking at our zoning and our land use table because I think there's a lot of things that are not quite right in our land use table that, that I think when we're talking about having walkable amenities and diverse housing types and missing middle housing type, we're, we're shooting ourselves in the foot on a lot of these things that we're saying we want, but we're not showing that with our code. I just really don't like it.
I think, I think the B1 often was some small areas mixed in neighborhoods, so there was always plenty of housing and it was just done in lots of small spots, different places for the, for the purpose of inserting a little bit of business and then specifying exactly where it goes.
I just don't understand how a townhouse is allowed in a service business district, but not in a neighborhood business district. It makes no sense.
We look forward to the text amendment when it comes.
It makes no sense.
Go for it. It makes a lot of sense. It's wonderful.
I, I'm just struggling with the fact that we say the intent, the intent, the intent, but we can't give any kind of guarantee. I can tell you now, as the owner of my property, I can guarantee to my neighbor what I'm going to allow to be done on my property and what I'm not going to allow to be done on my property. I own it, I can say that. The development authority is the owner of this property.
Yes, and we have established a seven-person development group that encompasses three members of the Mon County Development Authority or its staff, three members of East End Development LLC and one neutral party. And that is the, the group that when, when and if there were to be a conflict, that is the group that settles that. The seventh member, who is the neutral party on that board, is David Satterfield. And we have worked closely with him in the last year as we put that group together to ensure that what we have not only before you tonight, but what we start to actually build is something that the city of Morgantown can be proud of.
I'm consistently told by various members of the development authority, like, oh, it's the counselor in that neighborhood, you or someone from the Neighborhood Association should be included in these meetings and you should do this and you should do that, you should definitely come. But I'm not, and it doesn't have to be me, certainly. I just say that because I am the councilperson from that neighborhood. But aside from a friendly phone call or from you before a meeting or bumping into Mr. Rogerson before a different meeting, that's when I get my information, it seems.
So we learned what it's like to get out over your skis when we came forward with the hopes and plans of planned unit development. We do not want to be in a situation again where we feel we have promised more than we can deliver. However, as you stated, we are the owners of the property, we have a very willing partner with us and we are working in a collaborative manner because they too want to make sure that there is something that makes the community happy when it's built. And said, I, I can't guarantee any of that because we don't have the total number of votes, but I can say we will have this housing. There is going to be housing in this development. It is our intent to make sure that it is at least replacing what has been there. And if we can get more, we'll try to get more. We may be limited by 40 feet, but that's okay because that's what the neighborhood has stated it wanted to make sure that we didn't go too tall.
Can you go back to the other slide?
I'm going to have to go find it.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right, I thought, there we go.
So I'm a big fan of those yellow blocks on there because I see that as an opportunity for the housing authority.
I do too, as does the, the rest of the MCDAs.
And you all are the owners of that property. Are we going to work with the housing authority to develop some type of affordable housing on those, on those properties?
I could say that is our intent. But also, the planning partner that we're working with, the planner that's back here that works for our developer is also on the board of the housing authority. The one thing that, going, putting these slides together, one thing that I realized that maybe, you know, I would be surprised if we weren't back in front of you at some point or the housing authority wasn't back in front of you at some point. Is that R1A block there, that's some good property, but it's terrible property for single-family houses. And the only difference between the R1 and the R1A is the size of lots. It's, it's single-family only and there's no parking, the, if you come down off the step, you go right into the street. So I think, and it's a very large number of plots, I think that would be a good opportunity to see some more housing options through the authority as well. So that's just something to, to think about for the future and when and if we get to that point, I would imagine you'll see us back here or representative of, of, of a project.
You're asking me to put a lot of trust in you all and I'm asking you to bring me along with you. We don't like surprises and I know you said you don't like to promise and not be able to deliver, but let's be clear, it's been happening for three years almost. So I would much rather us be brought along and be part of the conversations moving forward than to end up at month 37 and be like, oops, uh, financing sucks, we need help.
Well, this is not about just financing. We have a project that will be ready to go when we have, we, we will be able to move forward with a project when the rezon occurs. Financing is an integral part of it, but this is not just a financing move. This is something that would be to see this area redeveloped and it's taken us the 37 months to get us comfortable with coming in front of this body and making this request.
So if you're not here because of financing...
That is a part of it.
I was going to say, can we put it off until we change the zone?
We cannot.
So don't, don't say it's not financing.
No, but it is not all. We, I'm a former journalist, Russ is a former journalist. I, I've always said that if I worked for the Associated Press, I would have been the most productive journalist out there because deadlines make me work really hard. When I worked for a bi-weekly business paper, man, it was hard to write an article except for every two weeks. But deadlines, which our financing definitely became a deadline, got us in our organizations together to get something that we feel comfortable with on both sides to bring to this body. Unfortunately, it took that, but that's where we got to.
Is there anyone else who has not gotten a chance to speak, who has anything that you would like to say, just so we make sure that we've heard from everyone, okay? Did you, do you have anything else you want to, how, how much more are we going to do on this?
Well, I guess, well, I guess the only thing I would say is that...
It's my neighborhood, it's important to me.
No, I want you, I want you, that's why I'm offering up again, I'm not calling for the question, I'm offering up again.
It's our city.
I'm just wanting to make sure that, that people get to speak and that, that we keep it moving.
The, the only other thing I would, I guess, say is that we've often heard about this and this rezoning change with, within the couching of how great is business on the bottom and residential on the top, as if it's a foregone conclusion. And I feel that's a very incredibly disingenuous framing. Just to talk about a development in that way is disingenuous and just isn't, you know, can be confusing to members of the public because it sounds like, oh, we already know what we're going to do here. And it's, that's not... because it sounds like, oh, we already know what we're gonna do here. And that's not how this works. So, I want to clarify that. I want people to understand that that, like, is, so when we get 20 years down the line, not even that long, but, you know, when somebody's coming to Danielle and saying, why is it that I don't have a business at the bottom and all residential at the top all throughout here, that they understand why. Because that's how this has been framed since the public hearing, and I don't appreciate it, to be honest.
Well, as I said, with partnerships, sometimes they're difficult, and hopefully five years from now, we can look back and say, okay, I see it now. That is our aim with the MCDAs, Councilman Butcher.
It's, you understand where I'm coming from, that like, what has been said in public hearings, and what's been said tonight, is this, like, very definite guarantees of what's happening there, while at the same time saying there is no guarantees. And it just, I want you to understand that, like, we have a deep and, like, serious understanding of how this process works, but not everybody who is here, or sees this online, does. And it frames this in a way that I think is dangerous for the public to take in, in that manner.
I think it's unfortunate that you see our organization as doing something dangerous.
But do you understand what I'm saying, is that there is one specific way in which this has been framed, that I feel is disingenuous?
What I have said...
And I'm expressing, hold on, I'm expressing frustration with that. And I just hope you can hear that, and take that back with you, and understand where I'm coming from, because it's been parroted several times, so, okay. And the idea that every single parcel here is gonna be...
That was never said.
Okay. That is what's...
Well, that's one parcel at this point.
That's what's intimated. That is what's intimated.
That is not, and also, I want to ensure knowledge that, at no point did I say every single building would above the first floor have residential. B1 also allows for commercial. There may be office space, there may be doctors' offices.
So the only type of housing this allows for is for...
Mixed-use residential.
Okay, so people need to understand that, and not understand that this is, that is what this area is, is that it's mixed-use, period. It is, what they do need to understand, members of the public do need to understand, is that there is one type of housing that this allows for, which is mixed-use. The rest of it is commercial use. That is the bottom line, okay? And what is being proposed here is not a large swath of mixed-use housing.
I would not say that.
I'd like to call the questions.
Is there anyone else that had any kind of, all right. I just wanted to reiterate that this is a mixed-use area, it's always been proposed to be a mixed-use area, and...
I do have, I do have something. So, we will have to vote in time on this. At that time, we can gather more information about the concept of the overlay, which I think is something worth, we're clicking into. So during the sec, because this is gonna take two votes to pass, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So during the second vote, if we wish to come back to the discussion of the overlay, that's something that we could do.
I would think that normally an overlay has a Planning Commission component usually, that it's not something that's just sort of added on, that it has some hearings and a component, but we can find out more about that, and how that's been handled in the past. I mean, it could be that we could do that, and we should just find out.
One thing council should keep in mind, as you consider that option, is that from a standpoint of your ordinance procedures, you cannot make on second reading, at the hearing where an ordinance is finally adopted, a material change to the ordinance. So, probably your best course, if you were to consider adding some kind of overlay district provision to the ordinance, would be, fortunately or otherwise, to do that tonight. But certainly, I'm sure Development Services staff and others are happy to look at options and continue to communicate with council, so they could consider that process and move it forward separately from the ordinance, if you wanted to do that, or hear an update on that at your second reading.
If I may, I believe Councilwoman Trumbull, you'd mentioned that the hope would be to have filed a text amendment for the Planning Commission meeting in January. Is it...
The Woodburn Association of Neighbors meets in January, so I would probably, unless, I mean, maybe I can just make one up, but I think that the Neighborhood Association is interested in...
I think that's something we would love to see run concurrent. And truth, the sooner the better on our planning processes, because come the time where this ordinance is signed, hopefully, on January 17th, that will begin in earnest, and if we have a good feeling at that point, between something being introduced, or being very soon to be introduced at Planning Commission, and then coming here, we can get our planning along those lines as well. And once again, I will state that what has been said is we will have our intent, we will have housing, and our intent is to have at least the amount of housing that we had on this site previously. That is what has been said, that is what will continue to be said.
And just for logistics, can I, so January 17th, if I'm correct, would be the next Woodburn Association meeting?
That would be the day after the second reading.
That was gonna be my logistical question. When does this come back to council for second reading? January 16th?
16th.
Okay. As long as it's not the meeting I'm also not here for.
Nope. It is not the meeting they are not here for. All right. Are we to the point where we are comfortable calling the question? You ready? Okay. Christine, if you would please call the roll.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Bouganum?
Yes.
Ilkweke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
No.
Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the good conversation on this one. Item C, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance authorizing a standard airline agreement and lease with Southern Airways Express LLC. And, I don't know if our airport director is in the room, but otherwise, we can ask our city attorney. Let's see. Who am I supposed to be asking?
Yeah, Mayor, please counsel.
There's still a couple of items that we need to clarify, and kind of clean up in the agreement. We'd like to ask council to table this item until next council meeting, if it's possible. Thank you.
So, we don't really need to table it, we can just ignore it at this point, and then we can take it up again when it's ready. We'd much rather see something when it's ready.
Great.
Thank you. Item D, consideration of approval of a bid award for the Ruby Amphitheater roof replacement. City manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
This is an item that has been on the schedule to be replaced for several years now, and that is to replace the roof of the amphitheater. It's, the current roof exceeds 20 years, and that's far exceeds the life expectancy of a roof. The funding for this project is being provided by the Hazel Ruby McLean, McQuain Charitable Trust. On November 14th of this year, we opened the bids and received two responses to the RFP. It is the recommendation, after reviewing, after the bids were reviewed by the Engineering Department, Cultural Arts and the Finance Department, that the recommendation is council award the bid to the lowest bidder, which is Murray Sheet Metal, in the amount of $128,704 as a base bid.
All right. Proof. Thank you. Thank you.
Discussion?
It's been needing done for a long time, and it's great that you're...
We've been talking about it.
Got some bids, because it's been requested for a long time. Yes.
I'm curious. The second bid, the higher bid, that was 50% higher.
Yes.
That somehow doesn't make me feel...
There must be a quality reason, Bill.
Well, I can tell you that, as those bids have been reviewed by staff, we've reviewed them in terms of their, the way in which they responded to the requirements of the RFP. They, both of them responded to the same issues, and so we're comparing apples and apples. My experience with bids of this, sometimes one bidder is more hungry than the other. You understand what I'm saying there, and...
Considerably more hungry.
And we felt like, even though the lower bidder was half of what the other bidder was, that they certainly are capable and met the requirements of the bid document.
Thank you.
All right. To the question. Yes, please. We call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Bouganum?
Yes.
Ilkweke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. We, staff has been very engaged in the budgetary process. We've started that process, and are working through the capital budget items with the department heads. The way the budget cycle works in the state of West Virginia, we're really required to present a budget and start working on a budget before we even know what our revenues are gonna be. And we have no real revenue projections at this point, and frankly, as we're talking about capital budget items with our departments, those are all contingent. I mean, if the bottom comes out of the revenue section, as we get all the figures in, we're gonna have to, and as we've talked to our department heads, on the capital items, there are prioritizations made, so that if we have to start cutting, we're gonna start at the lower level and work our way up, so that we have a balanced budget by the time we're finished. The other thing that I really would encourage, a memo came out from the Assistant City Manager back the latter part of November, asking for council participation on a survey. She gave the 12th of December as kind of a deadline, if we could, so we can start compiling the information from council and department heads, and start developing a kind of a framework for how we're gonna approach the budget this year. So if you have not completed your budget survey, we'd really appreciate your input. It really means a lot to us. It gives us some parameters in which to think about the budget this year. That's what's happening in our lives, and that's all I have to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Or from the city clerk?
I have no report tonight.
Pardon?
I have no report tonight.
Thank you. City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for the questions and comments on comprehensive planning and zoning code tonight. The, just as a kind of note for future planning, because you are, you're in the process of adopting a comprehensive plan. In fact, ordinarily, by this time, it was scheduled to have been adopted, but for the canceled meeting. And then, as noted, the next step is often working on more comprehensive updates to the zoning code. What you usually see and consider are petitions to amend the code from either property owner, or from the Development Services staff. There is a provision in state law also for amendments to the zoning code by the governing body. I'll follow up to council with a message about those, and a good process to go about them. But, you know, you can have input that way on the front end as well, and it looks like something people are interested in to consider for future planning. So, a good thing to keep in mind as we continue to look at that comprehensive planning process with the Development Services staff and Planning Commission. We, for our part, are also working on some forthcoming ordinance updates with the fire marshal, and with code enforcement to the local provisions of the building code, and to some of their fee schedule provisions. Hope to have those before you in January or February. And I have nothing else to report this evening.
Thank you. Council reports. Would you like to start?
Sure.
Deputy Mayor?
Had a Neighborhood Association meeting last night. Thank you to the mayor for coming by, and hearing about our sign that we are working on. Hopefully, we're working with MTEC and some of the students to try to get that done. I had the opportunity this past weekend to go tour the Capitol Building. Senator Manchin's team invited, actually, my wrestling team to go down, and they gave us a tour of the Capitol Friday, which was really fantastic. The kids all enjoyed it, so I was gone all weekend for that. And honestly, that's really all I got for tonight. But, if any of you would like to see some pictures, I'd be happy to share later.
Thank you.
Just a couple things. One is, the Assistant City Manager gave us to the 11th, not the 12th. So she gave you an extra day.
We'll give you an extra day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Or maybe we could get it in early. She yelled at me today.
Somebody said, she's already said that somebody did that, so we're gonna find out who later. Also, too, I hadn't commented when we heard the Communications Department give their report, and I do want to make one comment that I thought was very appropriate. Communications marketing is such a broad thing, and such a difficult thing, the idea of getting appropriate information out to everybody who really wants it. I'm impressed with your emphasis on community. I think by doing that, you define your parameters, and are more apt to be successful. So, congratulations on that approach. I think you're doing a pretty good job, so. And then the last is my continuing complaint. It's garbage collection last night, and although it didn't rain, the majority of the garbage cans on my street did not have their lids closed. Thank God it did not rain, although we have snow, so perhaps that'd be a new condition.
It's snowing right now. In Platte and Morgantown.
And that ends my report.
Thank you.
I have nothing today.
Thank you. The Woodburn Commission meets this Thursday. It's not our regular meeting date, so I just wanted to mention, for anyone interested in that, we meet at 6:00 PM on Thursday, at the Woodburn Community Complex. There's a lot of small businesses to support in our downtown. I know of at least, not only the downtown businesses, but the downtown businesses are really great about supporting other small businesses, so there's at least three different, like, artisan markets popping up downtown on Saturday. I wanted to mention that parking is going to be free downtown, starting on the 16th, all the way through Christmas, and then again, the week leading up to New Year, or sometime around New Year's, I don't know those things. December 30th to January 1st, it will also be free. So, great times to go down and support the small businesses. Also, the Morgantown Christmas Parade is going to be on Monday, the 11th, at 6:00 PM. Megan from Public Works told me I could ride in a snowplow, and since Neighborhood Coordinating Council got canceled, I'm gonna hold her to that. The only other thing I wanted to mention, I think, I have multiple times asked for a subcommittee on a charter review, to look at some of the statutes in that. And when we took office in July, I asked many, many meetings in a row, and I decided to take a break on that and see if we got anywhere. But here we are at the end of the year, and I still haven't heard anything on that. So I am, again, politely asking for a charter review subcommittee, and I would also kindly request to be included on that. on that.
I attended the Greenmont Neighborhood Association meeting last night, and that's, that's always a fun group to get together with. Sergeant Balderson was there to provide a police report update. There's a subgroup within the Greenmont Neighborhood Association that will be meeting with the Land Reuse Agency to discuss some, some ideas and issues with the Lower Greenmont area. And thank you, Ricky, for following up with me. And just a quick rail trail update. The rail trail folks, we've hired a company to blow the leaves and debris off of the forty-eight miles of trail, and we do that every fall. And one of the reasons is from a safety standpoint, the leaves often hide nuts and different things that have fallen on the trail. But also, it helps on the non-paved section to prevent grass from growing up by soil being caught up in the leaves. So all of Deckers was done, and they're halfway done on the Mon River Trail. And regarding the, around the amphitheater, the lighting under the bridge of Don Knotts right there and some totem pole signage, there is an agreement on the Foundry Street link from the DOH that is being waited on so that this can go to bid, and the work still hopefully happens possibly before year end, but that's still what MRTC is working towards. And, and there is also a MUB meeting next Tuesday, if anyone has any, any questions that, that I can relay on. That's all I have.
Thanks. I didn't have too much to report on. I did wanna reinforce the December tenth Human Rights Arts exhibit that's gonna be there, where they'll be presenting those human rights awards. I did ask, to answer your question, you can drop in and out whenever at that time, between four and six. I know today there was a, another stakeholder meeting on the warming shelter. Were you there? Okay. I had heard some things about it, but generally just trying to figure out logistics. Is that correct?
We mostly discussed how to get the word out best when the shelter is open versus when it's not open.
Yeah.
I'd say that was the majority of the conversation.
Yeah, I think Zach had said about some posters. He had said to me, Zach Morton.
Yeah, we're talking about posting at the library, Health Right, Community Kitchen is going to announce, the radio's going to announce. They're also going to put a QR code on some posters around town that would have, those with access to a cellphone, you would be able to scan the QR code and go directly to the Facebook page that would say, you know, this is...
If it's open, okay.
If it's open, here's how many beds are open. And I, I did mean to touch on that. The three-way agreement has been signed. It is ready to go. And we discussed today, she just has to get her insurance in place, and she has been permitted that those extra fifteen or so beds in the sobering center space are able to open earlier than December fifteenth, if she has everything else in place.
Okay, yeah. And I know a lot of people have been confused, probably not the people using the service so much as people out in the community, about the twelve-bed space. So Carrie at Bartlett House had opened twelve extra beds, and she's currently operating those as if they were the warming shelter when the temperature's below thirty-nine, thirty-nine or below. So I guess the moral of that story is, if it's thirty-nine or below, try to get to the Hazel's house, I hope, if you can. And...
And honestly, I think that's a little flexible. It was very down-to-day and precipitating, so it's still open all day.
Yeah, I think Carrie's talked a lot about just using common sense to keep it open.
She doesn't wanna open and close, and open and close. So if it looks like it's gonna drop again in a few hours, she's not closing.
Yeah. Which is something we had talked about. But, so I appreciate everybody's efforts on that. I think that's all I have to report as of, as of now.
So I appreciate, we had a couple of legislative meetings. One legislative meeting that was with Morgantown Area Partnership, and then another legislative meeting that was with Morgantown City Council. And then there have been a lot of follow-up done by our legislators, which I really appreciated, and look forward to continuing to work on the main issues that we were talking about, which were road maintenance, the extension of our runway, and what do we call it? Now it's DORA, but what is it?
Poda.
Poda.
Ryan and I are meeting with Delegate Williams tomorrow.
Yes. So, and I happened to see Delegate Women's getting, Delegate Williams getting takeout food. So, so anyway, I appreciate everyone working on the projects that they said that they would work on and that they followed up, like, the next day. So it really makes a big difference. And I'd like to wish happy birthday to my son, Kari, who had his birthday today. And as usual, I didn't get to go out to eat with them. So, anyway, I get cheesecake when I get home, I think. So that's it for me. And I think we have an executive session. If someone was willing to read us into it.
...six-nine A four B twelve to discuss potential or pending litigation in matters protected by attorney-client privilege. I move for that executive session.
Second.
Thank you. All favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes, of course. But not a long one.